To the meeting's order, if you would please join me. Thank you. And do you want to vote for a court?
I know it. Here. All right. Here. Carrie.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Kelly. Here. Jeffrey.
Here. And next we have the approval of agenda. And there's one thing that comes in late. As we as an important thing to consider, that I'd like to add to the bottom of discussions, which is weather closings.
Yeah.
So we're good with adding that out. If I have a motion for approving the agenda.
Make a motion to accept the.
Support.
Support by Noah. Any other discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of past meeting minutes from December thirteenth. And there's Washington days minutes.
How many in Washington approve?
Y'all second.
Second by Kerry. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Does anyone have any questions on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, we will move to. I don't want you to put the treasurer's report on file. Next, we have our bills through January fourth. The big one, obviously, most of me in the fire chassis is making progress. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills. That's that's good.
I'll second that.
And by Renee. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lee.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports, if you would ask.
Thank you. A couple things to bring up. Last year busiest month in the history of the department, one hundred and twenty calls per service. The MFPA has changed the seventeen ten standard, which is the standard for us to respond to incidents. Depending on your per capita population in square mile. It's one dedicated to read, but we're supposed to be on the scene in ten minutes or less and ninety percent of the time. Pleased to say we hit nine minutes, twenty six seconds on average out of one thousand and sixteen calls, which is the largest in the history of our department. Our single busiest day in eighteen hours included twenty eight runs, including a working structure fire in almost subzero temperatures. The staff did a phenomenal job through this and they haven't quit once. Very happy with all their dedication that they've done. The keep the wreath red program was again a success for the eleventh straight year. I brought that program to your team here eleven years ago. It's a wreath that goes on and mention that that again stayed red this year, even though we went to four or five fire responses, only two of those were in our jurisdiction and the rest were outside it. We also have, as you have seen, you approved the purchase of the chassis. Is it the manufacturer? I have been working with them diligently. Is in the build process. We're pushing it. May turn around time for that delivery to have radis. For any of you or any of the citizens that have questions about this fire truck, please, before you get on social media, call me. Two three one two eight six two five one eight. That is my cell phone. Please do not speak if you do not understand. I'm sorry. I don't try to say it that way, but I want to say it very, very clearly. If you can read the annual report I'm about to release, we went to over fifty-three car accidents, including five mutual aids that were requesting us for auto education. We're the busiest in the county. This piece of apparatus is the most vital thing besides that big fire truck. It's that simple. That's a manpower unit. Anybody seen the sick you fire or they saw the fire up in White Lake at Montague's that White Lake brought us? We had seventeen firefighters, but I had twelve fire trucks there. I had lots of water, but no firemen. This fire truck will transport firemen to again use those hoses to put fires out. Kind of a neat concept.
Yeah.
But again, unfortunately, people see what they see and read what they read or hear what they hear. Please, I've said this since the day I stood at that podium, which was over there, lectern over there eleven years ago, and said, I will be transparent, but you need to talk to me. So please, if anybody could insist, please at any point call me. Again, twenty-four hours a day, not mine. My cell phones on my business cards. Call me. I will be happy to sit down and explain everything to you. I have always been a steward of money and I'll always be a good steward of money and I will continue to be that way. I started away in eighty-six thousand dollar front balance and I think I read an hour at four hundred thousand. I think it was in front. So please give me the incentive to doubt again, I'll be ready if I can. Again, I am pleased to release the document. This will go out on the public website for all citizens to see. This is twenty page. It breaks down everything that the fire department did in two thousand and twenty-one, including my vision and mission for the next three to five years and what we plan on doing to make our organization a little better. Other than that, I have nothing else unless I'm going to include an assistant that I need to do for me.
Perfect. Thank you, Fire Chief. Next, we have our planning commission reports, if you would.
See, we met on December twenty-first. First order business was a public hearing for amendment to the accessory buildings. Just to clarify more information, make it more streamlined. Has to range to approval for board. Next order business was the election of the commission officers for the twenty-two year.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have Arizona Board of Appeals' report, if you would.
Hey, we discussed resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four. Mr. Gass suggested timestamped photos on inspection site at least one general title. Concerning resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four, number three, was suggested by Mr. Monet that mediation should be offered at this time with an end date, either by mail letter or phone contact. Everybody agreed on resolution eight. Same resolution number five. It was suggested again by Mr. Monet that at this time, a registered letter should be sent, also mentioning appeal within thirty days of the letter. The ZVA should be notified that the registered letter was received. Supervisor Jeffrey Martin suggested to create a structured motion stating need to uphold or overturn a violation. Craig Monet stated the majority of the zoning resolution being held by township officials. We all agree. Election of officers. David Blake made the motion. It was appointed by Scott Holland for Craig Monet Chair, Marvin Nash Vice Chair, David Blake Secretary. All in favor. There were no public comment. Meeting adjourned six forty-five.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have our annual planning and zoning reports, if you would see.
Two thousand and twenty-one was a very busy year. The planning committee conducted nineteen public hearings, nine were for special land uses, eight were to amend the zoning ordinance, and two were for zoning changes. They also reviewed eleven site plans. The zoning board of appeals reviewed nine cases in two thousand and twenty-one. Three of these cases were part of the new enforcement process and one was an extension of a project that was halted due to supply shortages in COVID. I issued a total. The zoning office issued a total of one hundred and twenty-five permits. Twenty-seven of these were for new houses. There were seventy-seven enforcement cases entered in two thousand and twenty-one. Clay conducted a total of one hundred and sixty-nine inspections. I conducted seven and Lorraine conducted one. There's a detailed breakdown in the packet comparing the stats from last year and previous years, and there's a significant increase from your year.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have our first public comment. And I know a lot of people are here probably quite a bit about the road, but some other things as well. There's two public comments, one now, one after the items and at the end of the meeting. Also, because Michalinda Road is a hearing, there will be a public comment section during that. That is the hearing part. So if you're specifically speaking on Michalinda Road, you can wait until that item and speak at that time. And for legal purposes, you will want to speak at that time with your name and address officially registered. We will take anyone who wants to make a public comment on an agenda item now for three minutes. The light will stay green for one, yellow for one, red for one, each by each transition. If there's any public comment. No? All right. I thought we probably had a lot for Michalinda Road. So we will move on to our decision items. First one is our quarterly budget adjustments and few differences here and things that we need to over. One is that the cemeteries have been busier than usual. We've had some more training in zoning than we planned for, which is a good thing, and the planning commission has been meeting for. So that's a few of what these adjustments are. Do we have a motion on the quarterly budget adjustments?
Make a motion. Accept it.
Do we have a second? A second by Noah. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have our first of two ransom requests here. This one's on the East White Lake Drive. And we have included in here are the estimates from an appraisal from the realtor. And these were a little delayed. Our previous realtor had an infection in his foot and he was in hospital for a while. And so these ended up getting delayed for meeting. But we have all the comparables in here and the estimates on price for what in liquidity.
I make a motion to open parcel six one oh seven seven oh two zero zero one zero zero one zero zero under consideration for bidding for a minimum of twelve thousand five hundred.
All right. All right. There's a motion by Noah, twelve thousand five hundred is the minimum. Second by Kerry. Any other discussion on this, please, property? All right. We'll call votes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the ransom request. It's south of Duthigg Lake on a specific road, which is why it raised it like that. And we have all the same comparables and appraisal in here as well on estimates for where minimum should be set. Anyone would like to make a motion on this?
I make a motion to open parcel six one dash zero seven dash seven one two dash zero zero eight dash zero 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 one dash zero zero for twenty-seven thousand for minimum.
All right. Motion by Kerry for twenty-seven is the minimum, twenty-seven thousand. Second by Noah. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have our planning commission member appointments. And on this, we have Tom Holland had taken the place of someone that had resigned. And then you finish out that term, so it's fairly short. It's been a handful of months and he's been doing well, learning and figuring out the process and going through his information and making decisions. So he was my, and I required with him and he would like to continue in that capacity. So he is my nomination for the position. And someone would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve appointment of Tom Holland, the planning commission, for a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call votes.
Lori. Yes. Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Nolan. Yes. Carrie.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the diversion council number random of understanding. And we've had some discussion on this before in the past, and I collected information. Obviously, I included quite a bit on here on how this has gone in the past. And it's part of a motion that was put through the county board in two thousand and seventeen. I talked to both the sheriff and the prosecutor about it. Both think it's good, and I think it's a good idea to divert people that have drug issues or mental health issues, especially if they've been committed violent crimes, away from being in the normal jail system. And I think that is good. But there hasn't been a ton of information forthcoming from us and the county. So I looked up information at the national level and included a lot of the in here and how programs can work. The stepping up program emphasizes including a lot of data and process, lack of data. And this seems unusual because it seems like the next step you would do after the program begins and was passed at the county level in two thousand and seventeen. And so I'm not sure why there's delay or what the data may be at the county level. It makes me hesitant on that myself.
I'm going to book the tables for right now because there's a lot of information to look over since we discussed a couple days ago. I want to get all the more data on this. I don't want to vote on something like this yet. Let's do it before I do it. And so I'll go to the table for right now.
Actually, let's call it.
Well, you can do either.
No, table isn't a, isn't a, is a. It's a significant legitimate step anymore because if you table it, it can be tabled forever.
Correct. Yeah. So a table doesn't have an expiration of course, but postpone it. It depends on which way you want it.
Yeah.
Just postpone for it. All right. So Kerry has a motion for postponing it. Noah has a support. Any other discussion on this? Let's roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori. Yes. Jeffrey.
No. Motion passes. Next, we have twenty-nine hundred, One Hall Road sale. And obviously, this is very big thing. So former trailer park on One Hall Road that the township owns, which was a bad decision in the past that our board had made. But nevertheless, the situation that we are in dealing with sewer and this property there, we had made resolutions on previously in, I believe, two thousand and twenty-six and number seven, the resolutions that we put out, we put it out for a minimum bid of a hundred thousand dollars, and we had received no bids at that time and nobody was interested in it for that price. Now we do have someone that would like to buy it and we have a resolution making that possible in here because previous resolution couldn't stand up because there was an opening date for the bid. And so this resolution is specifically for this purchase agreement, which has been included in here and I can sign.
Make a motion to approve resolution authorizing sale of property in twenty-nine to One Hall Road.
It's called by Noah. Any other discussion?
We need to have a resolution number on this and I don't know what the next resolution number is. So I make a suggestion that we amend the motion to include putting it the next correct resolution number on it.
Accept. Yeah. All right. Here's the call. Well, I have the correct resolution number included on this. So motion support is to accept the resolution if I'm going to have the correct resolution number. Motion support. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the annual meeting resolution. And I know last year, the annual meeting was hot and I think a lot of people realized that it seemed like the township could go broke in a single meeting if that went too extreme. And so I specifically inquired into that because I have a few people ask if the annual meeting should be canceled. It's unusual to do at this point, but I also, I think it's reasonable for whoever comes to the meeting to be involved in it as well. So I kind of like the process. But I have an opinion written up by our lawyer here on exactly what can and cannot happen. And the biggest thing that the electors can do in the meeting is stop the board salaries from being raised, which, which I think is really good, that politicians aren't fully in charge of raising their own salaries.
Correct.
Because that can be done in two ways. But the rest of the budget decisions are decided by the board so that the electors can't overrule the board in expending other things.
Are you serious?
That's, that's where the situation is. That's how it legally stands. So if we want to have an annual meeting of the electors again, we have to pass this resolution.
Well, I already know I can't do it from the exact two. I worked at that. I will not be able to.
Okay.
I have to decline this resolution as of right now.
Are you making, are you making a motion to decline this resolution?
Yeah. Make a resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll support him.
All right. We have a support on the decline. Do we have any other discussion on this? So traditionally, we've held it on a Saturday, so anyone falls in there and have a vote and understand if someone can't make it to the meeting in particular, which is always have some sort of schedule conflicts at some point is, but we would still end up with six or seven people even if one person can't make it.
Is there a reason that it isn't done on a weeknight instead of on a weekend?
Yeah. That's a good question.
No.
The reason it was set on a weekend is to try to bring in more people, electors. The meeting of the weekend would be a Saturday more available rather than other than night.
And that's just been the general process in the past, and so I.
I think we have done it.
You won't make it now.
We have it done in the past. Okay. This work schedule is here for Saturday at six P M. So if we did it on a Saturday at six-thirty, that's pretty late. Not static.
Well, we can't fill this here all night. My schedule is.
No.
So it's a little more than four people. I might not be able to. I might come actually accept this just to hold the meeting. I just want to be there. So I'm moved to accept the resolution twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two dash year one to hold in the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
All right. Do you officially rescind your first?
Correct. Rescind the first one.
Rescind here.
Okay. And you're supporting the acceptance.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Kerry to accept this resolution, seconded by Noah. Any other discussion on that?
Are you accepting the date, the city and the time?
Yes.
Okay. There's no time this time? There is. Yeah. Sorry.
Give the resolution. All right. No discussion. Roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. We'll call. Next, we have the sell tower contract. And obviously, we looked at this before and the basic idea was that we're contacted by a consulting company working for American Tower saying that Verizon is looking at leaving the tower unless they get by the finances, that we could reduce the rate to keep Verizon on. And so we, the board had passed that we're okay with that if that is the case. I had asked for proof from the company because now we have the official contracts in there from those consistent numbers. And there are a few things in there I don't like. One is the non-compete and all of those seem non-negotiable through, through this consulting company at least. I reached out directly to Verizon and American Tower. Neither one would have backed me. I asked for proof that the savings would be passed on to Verizon, meaning that we are, by blithering money, we are conserving the service for people with Verizon cell phone in the area and was told that I'm not going to be given any proof in like that. And so we now have no proof that we're actually saving service. I tried to negotiate a better service. We have none of that. We have no confirmation that Verizon is looking at leaving. And so that's where I made up this contract that we can decide to sign or not sign.
I make a motion to reject those sell tower leasing of the contract.
Motion to reject by Kerry. Hearing a second that.
I'll second that.
Second by Noah. Any other discussion on this?
Okay. So if we reject the contract, then the.
The contract that's current, if we reject the proposed contract.
The current contract stays in place.
The current contract stays in place. That's why I included, so this is part of why the.
I read through them like, I.
Right? Because I include the reference material in great, even though I wouldn't. But we have the original contract and we have a previously amended contract, which is the contract that's now currently in place and we have the proposed contract. So it just, the contract we're on now would just stay in place if we reject that.
But I just wanted to double check on that.
All right. Motion in support. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the Michalinda Road hearing and there, I'm not sure if people are going to be speaking in support, against, or if it will be a mix, but especially if you're speaking against, you'll want to be on the record if you're opposing it by stating your name and address when you come up to the lectern. So this will have its own public comment section and we will look at doing a motion by the board to open that hearing. We will have a public comments and we will close the hearing and then we will have the board making the decision on resolution number two of four. And so do I have a motion from the board to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to.
Motion by Kerry. Do we have, we have a support by Noah. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. The hearing itself is now open, so if someone would like to come up to lectern and comment on Michalinda Road, for, against, or any other comments, you are welcome to at this time.
I have questions too.
Yeah, you can come up and question. Anything on Michelinda Road, because we're going to be voting after this.
Robert Miller, 674 West Michelinda. You guys put it up for a 10-year to pay it off. When I first started the petition, I was told you could do five, 10, or 20. Why was it not done for a 20-year instead of just 10?
All right, good question. So I, these documents actually written up at seven. And so when I talked to the attorney, the bond attorney, he said the normal timeframe would be five, seven, or 10. And he said there are small municipalities that have pushed them out further in the future to something like 20, but you're getting on more shaky legal ground, because you would need larger repairs at that point. You're going to have to pass a special assessment on usable life of the thing you're passing it for. And so 10 would be normal for the top end of a road, and also for getting approved for the bond.
So you did, it's for seven years then?
I have this drawn up at seven, but we can adjust it in here. We could adjust it to five, or we could adjust it to 10 easily.
So I'd rather see it go to 10, I don't know what everybody else, but jumping to Texas up about $1,000 is quite a jump. Change it to 10 years might make it a little more realistic.
Right.
One of the other issues the attorney mentioned too is the farther out you put the bond, the more likely the interest rates are going to go up. The higher the initial interest rates could be, and the more likely over the term of the bond, the interest rates are going to go up. So that's why they gave us the suggestion of seven years.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Yes.
My name is Steve Holmes, I live at 1090 Michelinda. And on this assessment that the township or the county is going to assess on its property owners, is it by the amount of frontage we own? Or, or how is, how is it broken down?
This is broken up by parcel, per parcel.
So the more you have, the more you pay, is that, is that how it works?
Not by frontage. So there's three ways that it can be divided up. It can be each parcel is charged the same amount of money. It can be by the foot, like you're talking about, or it can be split between the two.
I see.
Because when, when the petition was turned in, it sounded like most people, more people, all the people wanted it by the parcel, and so this is written up like that.
So by the parcel, meaning that it's all going to be the same, or?
Each parcel.
Everybody's the same.
So if you want 40 acres of stuff, you've got to done it, you know, 40 feet.
Correct.
Correct.
That'd be a thousand, you bet.
That's true.
That's not bad then.
Then you're making out.
Cassie, you got to have a party for all of them, so every other weekend.
On the right, 669 Michelinda Road. And on the letter that you sent out, the horse riding parcel is not on the township to pay for the road as well. And they use it quite frequently, so the township should be on this list of parcels to be paying for the road.
Correct.
It's not on.
I agree.
Running out, so many horse trailers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they use it on, both, both entrances are on Michelinda Road. Correct, correct. So the township should be putting their whatever into... And I had directed it to be written up that way, and I thought we had confirmed that.
It's not like... Because now that the paper here, it has the property IDs for any...
It's not on. Correct.
It doesn't show who owns it, so it doesn't even show.
Highlighted, who's going to pay one, and the horse riding park is not on it.
Okay.
So that needs to be added to it. And another question, since the county did their work to it and drew Whitehall's road stuff on ours, and widened the road and cut trees down and stuff, has that changed the proposal as into what's going to cost that paved? It should have went down, because they put a bunch of cross, parcel cross. Yes, yes. And they, they gutters, and they, they cut down trees, and they did a bunch of stuff. So our cost should be a whole lot less than what original estimate is. And it is. And so what happened on that is because we already had this, this process going through, brought in the petition and everything, and we're looking at getting it paved. Now, the road commission is very skeptical of any of these things going through. They hate them. They don't want to do them, because they end up being disasters essentially. And a little disasters, because people don't want to get paid, pay for them once you get the numbers, and you can't get the numbers until you're partially through the process, so it's clunky. And, but I told them, the people seem serious to me, like they want to get it paved. And so they, they were still skeptical on it, but because they were tearing up oil, and they didn't have a specific project that the millings were going to, they offered them to us at a discounted rate of $3 a yard instead of $16 a yard, so a good discount on that material for bracing it up, which they would need to do for the paving if it was going to happen. And so in the fall, nothing was going to happen with it until we get all this through and get done with it. But in the fall, I said, yes, we will take that deal. That saves the township money, and you get a decent road upgrade for it. So the work that they were doing was setting up for this paving, is what it was. And because we got it for the discounted rate, these numbers have gone down several times in, in the estimates. Initially, it was over $300,000 somewhere. So there's a new, a new budget out there, a proposal out there, what it's going to cost to take it from where it's at now to paved, or? Correct, yeah, so, which is, which is included in the...
They didn't get all that.
Right, and, and so, and part of this, well, and there's four resolutions, all right? So the first one is the intention, the second one is what we're on now, the third one involves similar stuff on who's being taxed, and how much. And the fourth one is to confirm and move forward. Now, a normal thing to do would be to include resolutions two and three in the same meeting and move them forward at the same time. I've been breaking them up, so it allows time for people to get the information, to see it, come in and object if they want, give a written objection, come in and do a public comment in the meeting. So you know, with four meetings where we're approving stuff instead of three, if we want to move faster on them. And just for better public input essentially. And so there's different information included in each one. But specifically on this, there is, with the amount the road commissions putting into it as well, which is $57,000, which is 25% of the construction cost, which is what they do on local roads, I believe by state statutes. So the total estimated cost to be assessed are $209,668. That would have been nice to have in this envelope for, to break it down to, so we come to this meeting and know what it's going to cost, and... Right. What, who's paying what, and so forth, like the horse park's not paying anything, so that would have been included. So we could have came in here informed a little more, whether they, these are the parcels being here, being charged. Right. And what this kind of costs, and so forth. So we could have did a little deliberation after we made, and so forth, etc. This is what's going on there. Anyways, I wanted to bring that up, but the horse park is not paying, township horse park's not paying anything for this. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks.
I have another question. The one, we just got to the... Another question is, the horse park has the end down behind the rest area to the east. The other parking lot by the bike path is owned by?
Once you, it's a... Right, right there is, right there near the line, is, is the township line. I'm not exactly sure.
Because who wants the bike path?
Well, the bike path is controlled by multiple municipalities governed by the Berry Junction Trail Commission.
That's who it is. So should they get, build part of it to them?
Yes. Yes.
Does he use it?
Use it on our road.
He uses it all the time.
Use that bike path.
It's a good question.
What a good question.
Love that bike path. A lot of people ask me.
Yeah.
And what are the, like, numbers and everything I've given, like, is it, nobody ever have?
All right. So construction cost per the scheme county road commission estimate, which is approximately 5,602 feet plus or minus, was tree removal as needed, earth excavation, cutting the hill, grading of the base millings, crushing and shaping of those. Each of them may have one and a half inch for the base layer, and new shoulders is estimated at $229,609. The contingency or 10% of construction cost is $22,961. Township administrative and publication cost is $3,500. The legal fees for special assessment proceedings are $3,500. Township bond council fees are $7,500, for a total estimated cost of $267,070. And then the road commission, less anticipated MCRC contribution, 25% of construction cost, $57,402, with the total estimated cost to be assessed of $209,668.
So how does that break down to each one?
So each one is, the way this is drawn up, which I was thinking this included the numbers from the horse trail, which does not, or can look at adding that. And this is drawn up on a seven-year term, and I have some more documentation that I got in today, because I want more calculation. And so per year, the annual principal payment, because we can't pull the bond until after we pass the fourth resolution. And so, okay, I know exactly how much that's going to be. So the principal payment on this drawn up at seven years is $855.79 per parcel.
So does per parcel mean per person, or per?
Yeah, per household.
Per household.
Per household.
Yes.
Yeah.
For 10 years, or for seven?
Seven.
That's calculated, that's seven right there.
Okay.
And then there's, I, two others, because I wanted it drawn up with potential interest rates. So the bond attorney was looking at what interest rates may be, and drawing up what the full numbers would be. So there, apples to apples, this is also at seven years. He figures the interest rate on this adds 4%. And he obviously hasn't asked me the start date and that type of thing. And so the number on here, including interest, it goes down per year, because you're only paying on the principal. But the total due in first year, calculated at seven years, with the interest included, is $1,042.8. Now, we had drawn up, I had drawn up as 10 years as well, in this case, and including the interest as well. So in the first year of that calculation, it's $806.32, and then it goes down every year from there. The interest rate on that is 4.5%. So when, the interest rate went up by 5%, if you're going to seven years, depending. So the totals, if you look at totals, it ends up meaning they paid more in total over time. So the seven-year, the total amount, including principal and interest, for each person is $6,932.88, and the 10-year is $7,452.84. Do we have more public comments on Michelinda?
Thank you.
In the hearing itself?
I, I have a quick question.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to step up, this is the time for, for Michelinda.
I don't really want to skip it.
Come on.
Um, I'm Doug Miller, 674 West Michelinda. So our taxes go up this amount if we pave it. Okay, so then we're paved road. So are we no longer considered rule? And now our tax assessment's going to go up again, because we're no longer categorized as a rule?
No, so I had, on our tax assessing through the township, all right? I had our tax assessor Wes look at this, because on those forms, you can mark if you're on a dirt road, if you're on a paved road, this type of thing, right? It's comparable. And if you're buying a house, as everyone knows, if you're buying on a paved road somewhere, you're probably paying more money, because it's nice, you don't have as much hassle than that type of thing. And, but on our forms, as far as the township is concerned, for tax assessing, not for appraisal, right? Appraisal that you do if you're buying or selling, for the tax assessing itself, it's an informational item. And I had Wes draw comparables, where in the program, he has it marked as paved, and he has it marked as dirt, and see if it would change the amount. He said it would not, I said I just wanted proof of it. And it does not change the amount, because we did them on people's specific parcels. I didn't include them in this, so this entire packet is public information, and it's publicly posted on the website. So the numbers I was looking at here, other than the ones I got today that included the interest, are included and posted on the website, so everyone can look at those if you want. But that marking does not change the tax assessing as far as the township is concerned.
My other question is, so you said we have four resolutions before it's finalized?
Yep.
So if at the end, it gets voted down, we don't look forward, is there a chance that they can come through and find to what's there to make it, you know, like grind it down more? And then can we talk about a price for that, to make it more druggable, than leaving it worded up?
Yeah, so we potentially could. It's a, it's a board decision. And so, like I said before, we were able to get a discount on that upgrade, which is why I acted on it before we had this in, in place, because it was a good deal, and it was time sensitive. So if, if this were to fail at some point, then the road could be left as it is. We could have it drawn up, but I know Robert talked about this, of stopping this process, and then having it drawn up that it's just going to be a gravel upgrade, and then taxed based on that, which, which could be a lower amount. I had the road commission look at that, not in this level of detail, what it would potentially be, and they didn't consider it a huge cost savings, because so much work has gone into upgrading it to there where it wouldn't be paved, because it was so much dirt and not gravel. So they didn't think it'd be a huge cost savings. Yeah. Any other public comments, Michelinda?
Ten, uh, Branson, 124 Michelinda Road. And my question is, the Fruitland Township part from Whitehall Road to the bike path, will that be paved? Who's covering that, and are there any talks with that will remain dirt?
So as it plays now, it's Fruitland's decision, because it's in Fruitland Township. So the supervisor there, Marson Kowski, and I talked about it from the beginning of the process. And he thought it'd be a good idea to get it paved as well, and thought Fruitland would be interested in it. He brought it to their board and made a motion for them paving it. They, he did not get a second, so they did not have a vote on it. So it has been left in the book. They were reassessing, maybe they'll just do the gravel upgrade and not do the paving, or if he's going to bring it back to them as doing the paving. I know that he was looking at and talking about getting state grants, but grants is, they're, they're hard to tell if you're going to get approved for them.
Oh, get two homes on that. To be appraised.
And so, and it depends on what process they, they want to do and go through. And so I know they haven't started a special assessment process, at least as far as I'm aware of, and were so far as not voted on paving it. So it could be left as it is, as possible. Because the line is right near the bike trail, I talked to the road commission about this too, it'd be a weird place to end it. And the road commission told me that if Delp Township is moving forward with it, even if there's, even if there's a time difference, let's say Delp Township were to do it this coming year, and Fruitland gets delayed and does it the next year or something like that, you don't want an odd line for the road or the bike trail to be messed up. The road commission would do it in such a way that, that that area would be fine. It would be handled properly, even though it's near the line.
Because they got the gravel too, from Whitehall Road.
Correct. Yeah, and that is not going on ours, because that is, that's Fruitland Township. So Fruitland Township has to both decide and pay for their home costs. Good. Anything else? Well, the hearing's open. For Michelinda Road. All right.
I have another question. Have we ever applied for a grant?
On this road in particular?
On this project, yeah.
No.
Because Fruitland is pretty good on looking for grants and getting road, and they're really grant searchers, I don't know about anybody.
Yeah, I know they're looking at grant stuff right now, and he was talking to Senator Bubstedt about it in particular, and we're trying to go through the state. I believe it was mostly about the area of roads over by Lake Shore, and not so much on this, but if they could include this in it, I'm sure that they would. I don't know where they are on that process, and we have not looked at that specific grant on here. But I'm not so sure it's, well, one, I'm not so sure it's coming, and two, I'm not so sure it's coming in the near future.
Quick question. Now, if they don't do that, we ride motorcycles, there's no way to ride a motorcycle on what's out there now. Would it be made so that you could get a bike down that? I mean, would they?
Down, down what the road?
Down the part that's not paved.
That part is not.
The county would make it more smooth or something, or not?
It, it's between Fruitland and county. Two, anything else? Yeah?
Uh, when they were doing the road, putting the recycled asphalt on the road, I talked to the supervisor at the road commission, and he told me that whether, after they put the, the mill, the asphalt down, they're going to come through and re-mill, that's what he said they're going to do. So is that gonna, he didn't say anything about another assessment on that or anything, he just said they're going to do it. Is there any truth in that at all, that you know of? That was the supervisor talking, just one-on-one, having a minute.
Yeah, well, it'll, it'll probably have to be done. So right now, they're moving forward with the idea that it's getting paved. And so they're doing it like that. And just like in this, it's, it's included that it needs to be milled more.
Okay.
If the process stops, and we're not moving forward with the paving,
Okay.
then they have to do whatever they have to do to have the road in a good position. And I assume that would be some, some sort of fine.
If it doesn't go forward.
Correct.
Uh, apparently, you said that some of the millings were like inch and a half, two inches long. Some of those millings are six inches.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a hazard if you got a motorcycle, or, you know, even a bicycle sometimes, so.
Right.
And if the road does get paved, they got to put speed limits on the road.
I did not specifically inquire into that, I assume that they would.
Because right now, they don't speed limits.
Right, so it's just, it's dirt roads, it's a 50.
Well, it's not a dirt road, it's, it's not an approved road, but it's not a dirt road. And why there's not a speed limit on that road is the obvious.
Yeah, it's like a red light. Yeah, so it'd fall to the, to the normal 55 is the default. And specifically on speed studies, so look at this, I have a few manuals on it from the state. It's a fairly clunky process. Normally, what happens is, a lot of people are speeding down a road. People think it's unsafe, so you want a speed study done, so that it's set at a proper speed level, which is lower. And yet, the way that it gets processed as a, as a deal between county and the state, the way it's set up by the law, almost 100% of the time, the speed gets raised. It will almost never go down, so, which is very unfortunate.
That's just what we need, yeah.
We don't, well, they wouldn't raise it over the 55. But we don't have a good lever, or a mechanism, or a way to get the speed limits where we want them specifically lowered. Only we can, we'll look at, we're discussing the budget, we're in the budget season, putting more signs on some of the roads that don't necessarily have signs, but already have a speed limit. But actually, lowering speed limits is very difficult to do, almost impossible. Unless a bunch of people move onto the road, and everyone gets so tight, then there's a calculation they automatically do, if everyone's very close together, of lowering speed limits. But if you're not hitting that number, then not lowering speed limits is very low. Two, any other public comment? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Make motion to close the public comment?
Motion by Noah, go in a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Carrie, any discussion on closing it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Now, we are on to the board portion of this, and obviously, we heard a lot of public comments on here, and the things we could look at adjusting and changing. The two that obviously stick out is including the horse trail, which I planned on doing, and I thought, I thought I confirmed that it was on here. We could, I have not had the discussion of including the bike path before, that had not come up previously. We could look at adding that, given within our ability to add, and, because I've looked at the details, so I don't know if something's going to come out of the wood here up there. And we could...
Oh, the being just a point five interest difference, that's not a big amount. And hearing people that they would rather be the ten-year.
Right. I think it's a worthy debate on either side.
Yeah.
You know, and so that's why we split the difference, which is fairly normal to do, but I think ten years is, is very reasonable as well.
I think ten years.
I think ten years is reasonable. And also, we've got to make sure that, that the whole term is being assessed.
Yeah, and we can.
And we can.
That's not the county's.
Well, I'm just saying, you do, I think you are.
So how long's the bike trail?
How long will it take?
How long will it take to be assessed, I think the ten-year, and we also will have the horse trail?
We will still have, if this one, if this passes, we will have another, we'll have resolution number three in the next meeting. If it doesn't pass, then the process is done.
So we vote for it right now as is? It's going to, all the reassessments will come up in the next meeting, next one?
Correct, the resolution number three. This is part of why I break up resolutions two and three, in that if people want to make adjustments, if they want to object, it can occur, there's enough time to do it. So I would include it, if someone's making a motion, I would include these adjustments in the motion for this. The paperwork will be done in resolution.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve, adjust to ten years, and also for, make sure we assess the horse trail. This is on the next motion, on the next application here.
And the bike path?
And also the bike path. Thank you.
A second, I was the township. Bike path, right. Very junction trail, we have no control over the.
Sunday mobile.
The parking?
But yeah, well, they.
Lot the parking out.
We would have to, so the township would have to pick that up. The very junction trail is not, we don't, we don't have control over.
We maintain the gate or the ditchway on?
I've got a comment on that very junction trail. Obviously, you don't have any control of it, but there's a road right there, and it's Hyde Park Road.
Yeah.
And that road is open. They can't, you know, they can't borrow you from going through it. But doesn't it have an access right there to Michaland Road?
Yes.
Hyde Park Road?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be a parcel?
Only on the north side.
Well, it's on the north side, but it's still there.
Still a parcel.
They're very close.
Okay.
So that's a, I don't know, something considered to.
Dividing line. And Hyde Park is the township.
Okay.
So really.
So what we're, so what we're looking at is that.
Get it that way.
The horse trail.
Yes, horse trail.
It's very, it's only reasonable.
Bike path.
The bike trail.
So I technically.
legality issues that would bring up, and one more section of the public access on Hyde Park. I know the township is in charge of maintaining the ditch along the bike trail. By the county, yes. So we should be able to take care of that parking lot as well. If we're maintaining the, the land on the west side of that bike trail, then that land should be ours to.
Which side is it?
Or, excuse me, east side.
The parking lot is on the east side.
East side, sure. So if we're maintaining that whole property along the bike trail, then that parking lot is ours as well. So, so what should this look like? So the change of the tenure is fairly straightforward. All right? Adding the horse trail is fairly straightforward because I've already been looking at that and we already have that planned in, no problem there. The bike trail, I don't know what.
We have to review that.
Issues that will bring up, and I just looked at the Hyde Park public access, so, so I'm not familiar with that, what that will bring up as well. And so it depends on how we want to have a structured motion on this. The tenure and horse trail, easy to do, if we want to do something like.
Postpone till next month, then let's figure it out.
We could.
And make a motion postpone this for.
One month?
For one month.
All right, we have a motion for Kerry for postponing for one month, go in a second on that.
Second path.
Second by Nola, any discussion? All right, and so here's, my discussion out of this will be that I don't want to put it off too long because then you're eating into the next year and I don't want to fail with the project getting done.
Right.
And, and this type of stuff is why the road commission highly prefers not to do this. And, which, they're, they're convincing me of, of course. But what I can do is bring two and three to next month's meeting because I was going to bring three to it anyways. And that means the process wouldn't actually slow down.
There you go.
Correct. So we'll be on the same time schedule?
Let's do it.
And just do two and three in this.
Yep. Can I ask one question? This is an okay kind of question. I don't know how this works and I'm not exactly sure of what I'm asking, other than this, as a township, not these people just that are on Michalanda, but as a township, can we just, depending on like a buffer area, can we just, if it, if it's going to slow it down because of this teeny tiny little spot that has to do with Hyde Park, can we as a township adopt that?
Adopt it?
Like, for example, like we would be responsible for the five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars of that parcel, as a township. Instead of trying to mess around with, trying to get money out of a township, we'll take care of that, that area.
Oh, you mean could we just pay for Fruitland's portion? I'm guessing Fruitland would assess any money we want to send to Fruitland for any reason.
Well, you know, just to be able to make sure that we don't have this.
Meyer.
Trail. Well, we could, I, I think it was, I think it was around eighty thousand dollars. So, I mean, the township board could choose to just spend eighty thousand dollars to pay Fruitland's road.
Let's see what they say this.
I mean, it's very bad, I do.
I'm just trying to think, look at all the ideas and different.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All these people pay, and then have this section that's not.
Well, it would still be paved in front of them. I, I think what may happen there too, is, and it's, it's hard to guess, obviously, it's very hard to predict boards.
Right.
But if Dalton were to move on it and get it paved and Fruitland was still dragging their feet, it might be that they, that they then move on it, it might be just time delay, or it could just get stuck forever.
But what about looking for a grant?
We can, we can look.
I don't know how to do that. That's a great idea, I don't know, never, but maybe we can contact the Fruitland Township people because they really do give a lot of grants. Promote improvements. They don't know how to do it. They don't wear to go how to do that. Because that's how they get, like J Road paved, they got all these little access roads that they've all improved.
J Road was paved and nobody got assessed for that.
Nothing.
And they'll make a learning. That's why I grew up.
Yeah, the governor wants to fix our roads, let her fix ours.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, it's pretty much. All right, so, so we have a motion and a support for postponing this. Until next month, is there any other discussion on the year on that? No? Okay, I am going to roll call.
Kerry?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lori? Yes. Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. It was postponed until the next meeting. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen for accessory building Florida area, and the county commissioner went through the process of reviewing this. The, the largest change is that the zoning districts are now in alignment with each other, and so it simplifies the zoning a little bit.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen concerning accessory building Florida area.
Second path.
Motion by Kerry, second by Renee, any discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call.
Kerry?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lori? Yes. Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have our discussion items. So our super rate study, obviously, we've been talking about this, and we have it done. This sewer has been a mess since oh-six, the Wy Hall Road project was put in, and there's, there's a lot of history on that. But I had various options drawn up here for us to look at, and about the forecast on this. And scenario one is that we do nothing and we default on the bond in twenty twenty-six, and then the county covers the bond, and then the county takes our state revenue sharing, which is fifty-three percent of the budget, until they are paid off.
Okay. I'm not, sorry.
Well, if, so if we do nothing, that's, that's what it turns. And there's a nice graph showing where those lines cross on zero. The next one, we have a scenario where Dalton Township pays the assessment that's on, that's sitting on the wayside, that has been paid up until this point, and that basically makes it go broke in twenty thirty. So puts it further out. Scenario number three has the general fund paying the wayside debt over ten years. So what this means is the general fund, so everyone in the township that gets taxed, is paying for this Wy Hall Road sewer project in, in oh-six, but this, which would be a very unusual thing to do. And the rates are also adjusted to increase over time, starting with fifteen percent for a few years and then be going down from there. And that one, the, it never goes broke, that's, the finances work for the first time in that scenario number three. Scenario number four has the general fund not contributing the money, so all taxpayers aren't paying for the Wy Hall Road, especially some of the assessment, has increases to the rates to maintain the fund on its own. And you can see that in twenty twenty-three, the rates would then jump to a hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per quarter versus seventy-five that are at now, which is a decent jump. And then it slowly goes down from there. Scenario number five is if we sell the twenty-nine hundred Wy Hall Road project, which we just approved, so it just has to close, that money goes into the fund and then we don't use from the general fund to contribute for the debt on that, but we still jump up rates to maintain on its own, still large rate increases, but not as much. And there are a number of other things that we're going to have to look at on sewer, we're going to have to look at updating the ordinance, there has been no inspection or maintenance plan in place up to this point. Now, it's relatively new in oh-six, and I'm told with the equipment that was put in that it's in good shape, but that is a classic government error of not, well, one, not doing anything on these finances, and then in twenty twenty-six, everyone would be like, oh, we're so, we're so surprised that this is going bankrupt, no one saw it coming. So that's why we're looking at it now, so that doesn't happen. The other normal government error on this would be to have no inspections and no maintenance, and then something very bad happens and everyone says, oh, we didn't see it coming, it's, it's out of the blue, who, who could have known? And so that is not proper. And I've been talking with the county about that, the county department of public works is willing to inspect it with me next year, so we at least get an inspection in, but also save the township some money and see exactly where that is. I had contacted companies and had an estimate that included in a previous discussion item a number of months ago, about videoing it. But our documentation, and I, I sent them the documentation, we had plans for the sewer, they went out and drove it, didn't think it included at all, so we might discover if some sewer along the way at some point in there and didn't want to give a specific price in total, what it would have been a few grand somewhere. But if the county can help us do it next year, we'll at least have a good base of knowing what kind of shape it's in or what it is.
You keep saying next year, he's talking twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty?
That is, that's correct. By, by next year, I'm talking about this summer, so it's this year.
Thank you.
Or inspection, if you can. Which in my writing, I said this year because I corrected that, but it still feels like next year. Good point, very good point. And in here, and this is part of why the packets get large, I thought it was important information to include the two court appeals cases that happened after that, and one of them was with Michigan Adventure, and one was with Dalton Enterprises initially, and then a bunch of other people signed on along with Michigan Adventure. Both of those court cases went to the court of appeals and adjusted some things. It's, you could say that township neither won nor lost those cases, just some things were adjusted based off the cases. And I think that's part of why this is so complex, is it was a poor project to do in oh-six, and initially it was planned as much larger, too. It was reduced down to do, to be a two-point-eighty billion dollar project. Initially, it was something like double that. And, but then you got into these court cases and it made very complex, and exactly how things should be working is, is not necessarily a simple matter. There was a deal made with Michigan Adventure, and that will have to be renegotiated in twenty twenty-three, so that is coming up and something that we'll be thinking about, and I'm looking at it as well. So there's a lot with the sewer, a rate study, I'm looking for feedback from the board on what you think. It sounds like going broke in twenty twenty-six is probably not what we want to do.
Option five, I like option five.
I agree. I like option, option five is the best as well. Any other comments on the sewer, sewer rate? All right. Next, we have prayer in meetings, and I know people want this brought up, and it's normal to open meetings with prayer invocation, fairly normal, although also fairly controversial. I included a lot of information specifically on this in here. I know that as, as the country has had differences ideologically, that there have been fights in small municipalities around the country over this and different types of trolling. I think there's a few different options out here. Some places do it where one person on board or that just comes to every meeting gives the prayer, some people rotate it through churches that are in the area. I also, I think it's fairly reasonable to base it off of the beginning of the state constitution and the Declaration of Independence, because the, the federal constitution doesn't include any references to God, to divine, anything like that, but the Declaration of Independence and the beginning of the Michigan state constitution do, and to have something written that I read out at the beginning of meetings, I think that would be a fairly good way to go about it. And specifically in those, the Declaration of Independence includes the references to nature's God, Creator, to the supreme judge, and to divine providence. And it doesn't specify whether it's specific divine providence or general divine providence, which is the university debate in theology. But those are the four references there. And the founding fathers actually had very similar debates, same debates, in the constitutional convention, which I included James Madison's minutes in here where they discussed the prayer. And what ended up in that situation is Benjamin Franklin had originally proposed it. And they debated it, and they never, they had, they had a motion on the floor, they never ended up coming to a vote on it, and so it just kind of, kind of foundered there. And I know that some people think that you should pray personally before coming into a local meeting, if you want to pray about it, but not in the meeting itself, to create the separation of church and state. Separation of church and state, you know, a subject that I, that I really like, and I think is very important. I know a decent amount of history on it, Roger Williams and the founding of Rhode Island and Providence plantations is the key to that, I, I think that's, that's important. A lot of people misunderstand the, the history of that. But the, I mean, that's, that's a start of an overview on the subject, so looking for board feedback on, on what you guys are looking for.
I'm all for prayer, I'm a chaplain. And I have no problem praying publicly, privately. I know that we have a command, you can't look at creation outside and not know that there's somebody watching over and helping us through. And the thing is, is will we humble ourselves under his mighty hand to get his direction within how to handle life's affairs? Because he has all the answers and it's the one that helps us through. You know, so I have no problem whatsoever in asking help.
I think having this opening a prayer for, for, is, is a good thing to have.
Put a three-minute timer on it.
I think that's reasonable. Yeah, you don't want to get carried away.
Thirty seconds. I'm all in favor. I've, every meeting I've ever been in, just about, has always had, when you have your pledge of allegiance and you have a prayer, and when you go, you have the agenda, you have to come right.
Public comment?
Poor public comment, I think, so, and a few others, but, all right, any, any other All right, any, any other comment on this? How do people, what do people think about having it written out based on the declaration and the state constitution? Which I included in here, I included the bill of rights too because you can't force religion on people. And that's, I thought that was important to include. So I mentioned the four things that are included in the declaration in the Constitutional Convention debate. I believe, uh, Benjamin Franklin refers to it as something like the Lord of Light. In the state constitution, in state constitution, which every state constitution refers to the divine or God in some form, even though the national does not. The state constitution starts off of, "We, the people of the state of Michigan, grateful to Almighty God for the blessings of freedom and earnestly desiring to secure these blessings undiminished to ourselves and our posterity, do we gain and establish this constitution." I, I think a framework like that would be decent to, to have read in the meetings.
Is that gonna fit in a three minute timer?
Well, that, that fits very easily.
And I kind of like the free spirit of the Holy Spirit. Does the wind, you can't tell the wind, no, you're gonna blow this way today. No, you're gonna blow this way today. It's, I don't know. I'm more, I'm more spontaneous, I guess. But that's me.
I'd like to see it adopted. But then here a year and I'd like to see it adopted.
All right, anything else on prayer in meeting? All right, we will move on to the water quality reports. So the, the reason I included this is because we get them, we have limited half of them in, in board packets. But that way the board has them and also we publicly post the board packet so that anyone that wants them, we can get them. They can specifically look them up with P O M anyways if, if they're in so shoes. But I just wanted to include them here. It's, it's fairly decent as far as I can tell, but obviously we have people on the board that, that live on the lakes and, and I do not. So I'm sure he does, um, monitor closely as well.
One thing I've heard, it's small, but I don't know if this is true, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. But we have freshwater jellyfish. And I don't know if, if everybody's aware of that. But from what I've been told, the freshwater jellyfish usually bloom around the end of August, September timeframe. And they are, are actually a very good indicator of a very clean ecosystem. So when you have freshwater jellyfish in your lakes, it's actually a very good thing. And Twin Lake, at least East Twin Lake, I know has them.
I know West Lake does.
So I don't.
West Lake.
So that's a good thing in the ecosystem. I think it's pretty interesting. You can pick them up, they're no bigger than a dime or a nickel. And they're like, um, they, they, they do have singers, but they're not strong enough to pierce human skin. They look like a snow. Some love them. Just a little. Those are the things you really didn't need to know.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't think they were real when I was told about them by scuba divers until I was going through them and they were real.
And they almost, when they bloom, you almost look like you can walk out of the water and just walk on top. There's just.
Pretty thick.
Depending on the year, they're, they vary.
Yeah, I heard that they don't really bloom every year necessarily. All right, anything else on the water quality reports? All right, we will move on to the expenditure policy. And so the expenditure policy, we had already reviewed the purchasing policy, not, not very long, a handful of months ago. The reason the expenditure policy came up is for check writing, specifically dress is check writing. And we, the fire chassis is obviously a, a very large check. And so that specifically came up of, should it be coming into the bills? Like we approve the bills all the time before moving forward? Or should it be paid before that because it's been approved in the budget like we did with the purchasing policy? Well, and so specifically on this, we need a policy in place. And it looks like some point in the past, the township started operating the lake as an expenditure policy without it ever being passed specifically through the board. And I reached out to the board about it and because that is so controlled by state statute, you, you have to have the policy in place. You, you can't just operate like that as the township been doing. And, and so we, I have a little opinion in here and we sent a sample of a, a different policy, but it could be adapted to ours, do specifically correlate with the purchasing policy, which I included in this, in this package as well. So looking for feedback on what people think. We also have in here a dispersment policy that every year for the audit is, is also included. So it's, it's how we're operating is what, what the process is. But specifically to follow this dispersment policy, we should have an expenditure policy in place and passed specifically by the board. Comments?
Well, I would, I would think of, you know, like regarding going down the chassis, it's like when the board comes in, pay it. I mean, there's, it's hard on businesses when they're all moneyed and the township says, no, wait until next month because we gotta pass it to the board where the board's already agreed it. It needs to be paid, it just should be paid on due, even on, on receipt.
Yeah, and even, I mean, that's what the board said, is a lot of municipalities, they, they get clucky because there's a specific process in place. And it most likely came about in general, but also specifically in the township case, that maybe some, some bills were coming up late or tight on time or they were asking businesses to give us a little more time, something like that. So a specific policy can be put in place. Is there, is there any other comment specifically on expenditure policy? All right. Next, we have the 2022 budget, which obviously starts on April 1st. And so it's right around the corner coming up here. I, I've included, already generated, the, the comparison of what we've spent so far and what we've budgeted before in last year. So it's a good starting base of seeing how the expenditures have obviously gone. And with some minor quarterly adjustments like the education expenses, the planning commission meeting more. And that can change from year to year. Steve and I have both gone through a decent amount of zoning training. And so that's, that's where a lot of the education budget came from, so that won't necessarily be repeated. Unless anyone on the planning commissioners, zoning board, appeals wants to tackle a lot of educational stuff, which I think is important and good, so I'm completely open to that and will continue to improve that. Um, as far as the planning commission meeting more, it looks like it's been very useful for them to have the working sessions. And so that, I assume will continue, so the budget should be adjusted there. These types of things. Bigger things that we're looking at is that we, you know, the parks have largely fallen behind on being taken care of properly in the township, which can look like a budget savings, but then at some point you have to, you have to do something with them. And so I know there's been projects planned in the past for those, which we've not followed through with. And so I think we probably should plan for some, some refreshment in, in parks, but then actually will follow through with the project. Any other thoughts, comments, ideas, concerns in 2022 budget? We're discussing it at the next couple of meetings as well, right before the budget, of course. All right. Uh, the last thing is the thing that we added, which is weather closings. And so the generally accepted policy has been that Reese Puffer closes, we close, even though we have students that go to multiple different school districts. And last year, that wasn't too much effect because they were meeting online virtually so much of the time that even if there was bad weather, they didn't have the need to close because the people weren't going there. And so we really didn't encounter it last year. This year, we've obviously encountered it just last week and Reese Puffer was closed on Thursday and Friday. And we had the township closed as well. I separate access, I, I have a sign in for WZZM. So I posted that township was closed separately, Dalton Township Hall was closed on WZZM. So we can make a post in that capacity as well. I do not think we should have been closed on Friday. I think that's unreasonable. I don't think we should be closing as much as schools. Their needs are different. They have kids standing outside in the cold early in the morning when it's still dark. They have a bunch of kids riding on buses on local roads where the, the bus route has to take, the bus route that it has to take, where as other wise individuals can make their own decisions in life. We have, you know, Myers, they continue to open. My garage man came today even though it was, it was a bad day. And so usually the world does not shut down because it gets down to nine degrees and, and it's snowy. So I, I don't think it makes any more sense for the township to be closing down when Reese Puffer does as for Reese Puffer to close down when we do. I think they're two separate institutions with their own individual needs and the calls should be made separately. Basically, is where I'm at on it. I thought it was in writing, uh, last week somewhere. And so if, that the board had passed previously, which is why I closed on Friday because I wanted to follow the policy. If it had been taken through the board. And we looked, we cannot find the measuring where it was passed, where it was put in place. And so it appears to just have been a generally accepted policy that we can now generally not accept.
I particularly accept that, we don't really accept that.
Any suggestions about, like, for example, there were, like, a day, you, you typically open at nine or 10 o'clock?
Nine.
Nine o'clock? So if you open at nine, that's, of course, a couple of hours. Usually, road, the, road conditions out there and salt and it's a lot different. Seven o'clock, 7:00 AM, 6:00 AM is a lot different than nine. So I can see.
Right, when they're, and when they're at bus stops and stuff, I mean, I'm sure, I, I think the schools should be pretty conservative. It's reasonable, you're, you're dealing with kids.
But then there's also two other factors that come in that, you know, school might be in session and then you hear that there's a huge lizard coming at two o'clock. It seems too reasonable to me that, it seems like there should be some, there should be some type of policy that you could close down and go home, have everyone here close down and go home even though the school has a.
Well, the, the way, the way I turn the handle is basically I can make the call. Just like for the school, the superintendent makes the call. I can, I can make the call in those situations. And I, and I know there's places that do two hour delays and schools do two hour delays. I know Lake Dennis switch, so when Reese Puffer closes, they do a two hour delay. But largely, we're, because we're opening at nine, we're already in the two hour delay timeframe of a school.
Right. It's reasonable.
All right, anything else on that? No? All right, we will move on to our second public comment section. So you can speak on anything you could possibly want to speak on. If you want to just come up to the lecture, anything at all? If nothing, then I am, and any comments from the board, anything at all? Then I am looking for a motion to adjutant?
I make a motion to keep Kerry.
Second by Renee, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.